On the Wise Garber Distribution Center by Mr. Mark DeCharm, who is the Clerk Craft Director for United States Postal Service.
I'd like to express my gratitude to the Anderson County Commissioners, specifically Commissioner Isbell, for allowing me the opportunity to speak to you this evening. My name is Mark DeCharm. I am the Clerk Director and Chief Steward of the Greater Smoky Mountain American Postal Workers Union Local 263, and an eighteen-year veteran in the postal service. Our local union represents approximately six hundred postal workers in the East Tennessee area, including Anderson, Blount, Knox, Roan, Jefferson, Granger, and Loudoun Counties. Tonight, I cannot speak to you on behalf of the postal service itself, but I can speak on behalf of postal workers and my union, and how we believe the postal service's proposal to alter mail operations in Knoxville would have a negative impact on counties such as yours. On October seventeenth, my union was made aware that a mail processing facility review would take place for the Knoxville Processing Distribution Center. However, the union was also provided with the USPS timeline that included dates of the public input meeting, completion date of the review process, the move date of mail services, and the completion date of employee relocation. Before the review had even begun, the postal service had already made their decision regardless of public and employee input, and regardless of mail service impacts. On October twenty-fifth, the postal service announced to the public that the Processing and Distribution Center would undergo a facility review to evaluate moving some of the mail processing operations from Knoxville to Louisville, Kentucky Processing Distribution Center. They claimed that the process will have minimal impact to customer service, and delivery services are expected to remain unchanged in most cases, and that our facility would become a local processing center. On November thirteenth, the postal service sent out a notice of public input meeting in order to share initial results of the mail processing study and allow the public an opportunity for input. The meeting was scheduled to take place at Pellicy State on November thirtieth at three P.M. If I were a gambling man, I would bet the majority of the individuals in this room were unaware that a mail review was even happening, let alone a meeting was taking place. On November twenty-first, the postal service released the initial results of the review. The results claimed that the existing facility on Wise Garber Road would be modernized with simplified processes and standardized layouts. Without going into any further detail, they also stated that there would be no career layoffs, but anticipated a net decrease of twenty-eight craft positions. The postal service held a meeting on November thirtieth at three P.M. on a Thursday, when businesses are still open, parents are still at work, children are still at school, and the majority of postal workers are at work. There was no information provided as to where on campus the meeting would take place, nor is there any signage on where to go. The postal service kept the meeting as hidden as could be so there would be little opposition from employees and the public as humanly possible. At start of the meeting, the postal service said that they would not take or answer any questions presented to them, that this meeting was for public input only. The postal service even refused to answer when the questions proposed on that day would be answered. During their presentation, they announced that the outgoing mail destined for other states and zip codes outside the East Tennessee area would be sent for processing to Louisville, Kentucky. Without explanation, they announced a new net decrease of now sixty-three craft employees, a two-hundred-and-twenty-five percent increase in the number of decreased employees that were announced on November twenty-first. Upon completion of their presentation, the public was invited to provide input. I took to the microphone and was given a max of one-hundred-and-twenty seconds to speak. I spoke about the fact that Tennessee was one of the fastest-growing states in the country with a one-and-a-half percent growth rate, while places like Louisville, Kentucky have a negative growth rate, and how moving mail operations out of a booming economy made no sense. I spoke on the fact that companies and businesses such as Smith &amp; West and Malibu Boats, Three M., Bush Brothers Jewelry TV, and ORNL all have headquarters or have moved their headquarters to East Tennessee in recent years because of the cost of doing business and the location of available shipping routes. All of this fell on deaf ears, and they sat and stared blankly at the public and employees present. The postal service concluded the meeting with a notification that it would be a survey available to the public until December fifteenth. Once again, I've ventured to guess that many in this room were unaware of this as well. The postal service is playing a smoke-and-mirrors game with their clever wording. The majority of career postal employees are protected against layoffs thanks to our collective bargaining agreement. I mean, it's to most citizens, the postal service this year added one new supervisor for every five existing supervisors across this country. Not an increase in the number of employees that actually process or deliver your mail, but a twenty percent increase in supervisors of existing employees. In order for the postal service to relocate sixty-three career employees to another facility and follow the rules in the bargaining agreement, they must first separate all non-career employees, meaning they will be forced to lay off over one-hundred employees with less than two years of service right after the holidays. They have refused to address this matter, and when I personally questioned them on it, they laughed in my face. With nearly two-hundred less postal workers in the city of Knoxville, what does that mean for mail services in East Tennessee? For those of you who are unaware, all of your county's mail, with the exception of drop shipments being delivered to your local post office, are processed in my facility on Wise Garber Road. Our facility is open twenty-four hours a day, three-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year. It is staffed on every single holiday of the year, including Christmas. When I leave here this evening, I will join over two-hundred-and-fifty employees currently on the clock in that facility, working through the night to process letter mail, flats, packages, unload, load, and dispatch trucks so that no later by five A.M. tomorrow morning, the trucks carrying that mail will depart our facility and head to your local post offices so it can be delivered to you. Many of those employees this week will be forced to work seven twelve-hour days. We are the ones who run letter mail all day and all night, so when your carrier receives the trays of mail in the morning, those letters are organized from its first stop to the last. We are the ones sorting out your Christmas packages to your loved ones tonight. We are not the ones on the Christmas commercials, you see. We are the ones behind the scenes that are essential in getting mail to you on time. If you were to remove nearly two-hundred employees from our installation, it would have a trickle-down effect on your county receiving their mail on time because there would simply be less employees available to process your mail. The mail delays in Anderson, Blount, and Knox Counties are well documented. Just this past week, Congressman Fleischman sent out a notice saying that he was aware of mail delays involving medicine from the VA Johnson City. The postal service is proposing to send medication mail from the VA Johnson City to the Nashville Music City Annex, where just two weeks ago Chattanooga's mail volume was so heavy, they attempted to send their mail to Nashville. Nashville informed them they could not offload there, so Chattanooga's mail was then sent to Atlanta, where a line of two-hundred tractor-trailers were lined up to get into the facility to offload. The Postmaster General's plan reduces the service standards we have had for decades with no clear savings to his ten-year plan. In two thousand and twenty-one, Postmaster General DeJoy stated that by two thousand and twenty-three, the USPS would break even. However, in two thousand and twenty-two, he announced the USPS would not break even till the end of the decade, and in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three, the postal service lost six-and-a-half billion dollars. Postmaster General DeJoy has forgotten the last word of our name: service. Ingrained in the U.S. Constitution, the postal service is obligated to deliver to every address in America six days a week, and in some places, seven. In rain, sleet, snow, and hail, oftentimes Amazon, FedEx, UPS will use the postal service for last-mile deliveries because there is no profit for them to deliver to rural communities, and the postal service is already obligated to deliver there. A common misconception about postal service is that we operate on taxpayer dollars. That is false. We operate on postage alone. Slashing service standards, reducing employees, and outsourcing mail to other states is not the answer. Growing the processing capabilities of places like Knoxville are. Making Knoxville the facility that mail is shipped through is the answer. The Knoxville PNDC consistently ranks at the top of the nation in utilizing machines that process packages. That is solely because of the dedication and perseverance of the men and women that work on them all day and all night to serve their community. I have worked closely with Congressman Burgett, Chief of Staff and Legislative Assistant. In the last few weeks, Congressman Burgett, Fleischman, and Harshbarger have all sent a joint letter demanding answers from the Postmaster General regarding this matter, but it is simply not enough. Every citizen in East Tennessee should make every effort to get involved in this fight against dismantling the people's postal service. Your constituents deserve better. Our employees deserve better. And again, I would like to thank the Commissioners and the opportunity to speak to you this evening. Commissioner Isbell has my contact information if any of you would like to follow up. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that. We do have one more presentation this evening, so I will turn it over to Chairman Mays.
Thank you. We left this off the agenda because we knew Annette would run. And I'm doing this just because I know how she is. I've known her almost my whole life, and she doesn't like big crowds. So, Annette, will you come forward, please? Annette, this is a little long history. When I was a kid, she lived next door to my aunt, and I was always in her yard because I could never make a shot, and it was always bouncing in there, in her yard, and I was constantly having to go over there. And then fast forward to my adult life, my ball kept bouncing in the same court where I, we got to work together, in the clerk's office and now on commission. But on behalf of Anderson County Commissioner, we just want to say Merry Christmas to you, and thank you so much for everything that you do for all of us. You mean the world to us, and definitely couldn't do it without you.
Thank you, Chairman Mays. Thank you, Annette. We appreciate all you do for us. With that, I think that we will stand in adjournment until the six-thirty commission meeting.
First, we do have a quorum, so we can proceed. Tonight, what I'd like to do is first introduce who will be offering our prayer and then He is the pastor at Bethel Baptist Church. And then our pledge will be by an individual who will be introducing themselves tonight out of the Cub Scout Pack 73. So please stand with me.
Bible says, "Let every soul be subject to the governing authorities, for there is no authority except from God, and the authorities that exist are appointed by God." Let's pray. Father, I ask that you would give this body of commissioners the wisdom of the ages which emanates from eternity, humility as we humble ourselves under the mighty hand of God, integrity as we do all things as unto the Lord, and maturity as we grow up into the mind of Christ, and we ask it in Christ's name. Amen.
My name is Parker Hugabee.
My name's Levi Curdle.
We are from Pack 73, and we will be doing the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, before we go to Appearance of Citizens, I have received a friendly reminder from our friend in the back. Andy, please, whenever you are recognized, speak into your microphones. I think the text messages he receives from folks at home sometimes can get a little airy. So let's let him have a holly, jolly season as well by speaking into our phones. Okay, we will move on to Appearance of Citizens. This is for items that are on or not on the agenda. If you would like to address commission for any of those things, you will have three minutes. Is there anyone who would like to address county commission? Seeing none, we'll move on. All right, approval and correction of agendas. I believe an email was sent earlier today by Annette adding the ADA committee. If there was, it was there, but I'm not sure what happened, just technology. But is everyone okay with adding that to the consent agenda? All right, so we have a, did you have a motion, Commissioner Anderson?
Oh, no.
Oh, I saw one. All right, anything on the consent agenda? Do we have a motion for approval? All right, we have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving on to the regular agenda. Is there any, any changes, anything that you would like to add? Seeing none, I have a motion by Commissioner Wondell to approve as presented, seconded by Commissioner Verran. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, first, we will start with elections and appointments to committees and boards and commissions. I can recognize, is the gentleman from the, there Seth, there he is. If you want to come forward and just announce who these replacements and everything will be.
Yep. Seth Whitehouse with UT Extension here in Anderson County. We're on the second floor, if y'all are unfamiliar. But we would like to appoint the following, Michael Foster, Jeremy Horn, and Kathy Turpin to replace Phil Jaeger, Robbie Giles, and Mindy Wells.
All right, we have a motion and a second, is that as a group? All right, we have a motion and a second to approve these as a group. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Seth. All right, presentation of reports elected official, we will now go to County Mayor Terry Frank.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of items for action. The first is a, an agreement between the Anderson, Anderson County and Anderson County Schools. This agreement was included in your agenda packet. Basically, to summarize this, this is a food insecurity grant that was, that is flowing through Tennessee Economic and Community Development. For purposes of the grant, the school system could not be the applicant, the county had to be the applicant, but the schools, this is a great win for them. It will allow them to purchase a food truck, some materials, and expand their food distribution to areas of the county where there is need. So this is just an agreement between the finance county side acknowledging how it will operate. There's only one suggested change that differs from what is in your agenda packet, and that is just clarifying, we reference an exhibit but don't really spell out that that exhibit is the actual grant. So I am proposing to modify that to just say Anderson County, Tennessee will allow the use of equipment and supplies allowable, which is already in what you have, but add the language under the ECD food insecurity grant attached as an exhibit.
Okay, so we have a motion for approval. Are you okay with the modification? All right, a motion to approve by Commissioner Anderson, seconded by Commissioner Allen. Any discussion? Commissioner Wondell, you're recognized, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Mayor, I didn't see in there, it may have been in there. Do we know how much this grant's going to be for?
It's a, I think a hundred and ninety-four thousand. It's actually in your purchasing agenda as well.
I was just curious. Thank you. No, that's good. Appreciate it.
Yeah, a hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Anyone else? All right, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, and then the next action item is Anderson County has been working quite a while through the process for improvements at the Veterans Bridge. The next step in the process is a ten-year renewable licensing agreement with TDOT. Jay has looked at this and provided a cover letter and his stamp of review, and I am asking for approval on this particular item.
Okay, we have a motion for approval. Is that correct, Commissioner Allen? All right, seconded by Commissioner Smallridge. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, Robbie Holbrook, Director of Finance.
Right, thank you, Chairman Mays. Jumping into the cash and fund balance report, ending November 30th, 2023. Restricted funds, 1.5 million. Committed funds are 1.2 million. Assigned funds, 3.7 million. Unassigned fund balance, 10, 10,865,316. Total fund balance, 17,453,386. Cash is 14,366,668 for the general fund. The schools' fund balance, 8.5 million. Cash, 8,410,32. Any questions on the fund balance report?
Do we have any questions for Director Holbrook? Seeing none, go ahead.
All right, sales tax for the month of October, up 1.4% for the county as a whole, at 3.7 million. Anderson County was lower than last October, 396,910 dollars on the sales tax.
Any questions for Director Holbrook on the sales tax? Go ahead, Robbie.
Okay, ARPA projects, revenue loss is at 1,074,970. That's what's available in revenue loss. Other eligibility's, 1,767,769, for a total of 2,842,740. We did commit some of those funds in the budget portion. We'll get to that later in the report, but, and we are working to get all of the funds available in the revenue loss, and I think we'll have that for you next month as well.
Okay, is there any questions about the ARPA funds? Seeing none, go ahead, Robbie.
Okay, the grant inventory list for Anderson County government has not changed since last month, with their last grant being the terrorism enhancement grant. We're going to start providing this information each month, but unless there's any changes, I'm probably not going to report on that a whole lot.
All right. Any questions for Director Holbrook before we move into our action items? Seeing none, all right. And I will say this really quick. If there are anything, any items that get pulled out individually, that maybe normally get approved as a group, please allow us just a second for Kobe and Brian in the back, just to make an additional line that'll come up on your screen. But it takes just a few seconds, but sometimes it's either the fluorescent light bulbs, my blood pressure, or just all the pressure. It gets a little hot up here sometimes when we have to wait. So just wanted to throw that out there. Go ahead.
All right, thank you. Group two appropriations, one from the school department, the special education for 24,000 dollars.
Okay, we've got a motion for approval by Commissioner Bo Champ, seconded by Commissioner Allen. Any discussion on this motion? Please go to the board and vote. Fifteen yes, zero no, motion passes.
Thank you. Group three, transfers from the school department. There are two of those, both from physical services, for 25,650 and 27,831,06.
All right, we have a motion for approval by Commissioner Bo Champ, seconded by Commissioner Jaeger. Any discussion? Seeing none, go to the board and vote. Fifteen yes, zero no, motion passes.
All right, thank you. Group four appropriations, non-school. There are six of those. I'm deleting, we're not considering number 16 this month. Eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, and 13, omitting 16.
Yes, sir. We have a motion by Commissioner Allen. Is that as a group, sir? All right, we have a motion to approve as a group, seconded by Commissioner Smallridge. Any discussion? Please go to the board and vote. Motion passes.
Thank you. And group five appropriations that affect the general fund, unassigned fund balance. There are two of those, both from the mayor, for 7,500 and 15,000.
We have a motion by Commissioner Bo Champ and seconded by Commissioner Jaeger, is that as a group? All right, any discussion? Seeing none, go to the board and vote, please. Motion passes.
Okay, group seven miscellaneous. The first item was the City of Clinton traffic lights. That motion failed. The second item was the animal shelter property. That, that motion passed for approval of 70,000 dollars to offer the City of Clinton, which they have, I think the mayor told me I could report on this, accepted our offer of 70,000. So I need this committee, I mean, the commissioners to approve that as well.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Verran to approve. Correct, Mr. Verran? Seconded by Commissioner Bo Champ. Any discussion? Commissioner Wondell, you're recognized.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Mayor, could you just let people at home know where this property is located?
Yes, sir, so going into South Clinton, if you turn left at Carden Farm and you kind of go before there is a curve at a bridge. If you take a left, there's the dog park. If you take a right and just go over the railroad, the property is just kind of right on the right.
How big is it roughly?
Four, 4.6 something acres, 4.635 or something like that, but four, almost five.
Thank you. Appreciate it, ma'am.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, go to the board and vote, please. Motion passes.
Okay, there was no new business under business. We had two items. The first were the radios. Commissioner Mays made a motion, seconded by Commissioner Bo Champ, and passed unanimously to refer to Anderson County Board of County Commissioners with a recommendation for approval of up to 1.1,250,000 for the purchase of radio communication and equipment for the county. Funds to be taken from the ARPA Fund 121.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Bo Champ for approval, seconded by Commissioner Allen. Any discussion? Commissioner Wondell, you're recognized.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I'll make a quick, do we have an idea of how long this will take once it gets through?
I think that Bryce is working on this, he might have.
Thank you.
All right, any other discussion on the motion? Madam Mayor?
Just, Mr. Chairman, I would like to say, I know this has been through Fire Commission and also Budget Committee, and the county had a meeting, a workshop with all of the responder agencies, including the municipalities, and if you all approve this, I would like to say just thank you to you as a Board of Commissioners, because this is a very proactive step. It's going to make Anderson County a next-level community in terms of emergency response and communication and interoperability. So I do want to, I know there's a lot of positive votes already on, on this committee just because of the other committees it's gone to. So I just want to say thank you if, if you make this happen.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, sir.
I would also like to add that this includes the Fire Department's EMS and the Highway Department.
Right, yes, thank you. Okey-dokey. Any other discussion on the motion? All right, seeing none, let's go to the board and vote, please. Fifteen yes, zero no, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the next item was the Scarborough 85 Project. Motion by Commissioner Wells, seconded by Commissioner Bo Champ to commit 125,000 dollars in funding from the Tourism Department's fund balance and refer to the Anderson County Board of County Commissioners with a recommendation for approval.
Okay, we've got a motion by Commissioner Verran and seconded by Commissioner Wells. I do want to state, and Robbie, you can probably explain it, explain it better, but with requirements under the statute and this has to be posted
In the paper.
In the paper for 10 days. And I know that's something that, and it also needs to be accompanied with a resolution.
Yes, that will come back next month.
And so, and I, and I'll ask you what your, your motion is, but I would just let you guys know that, and Jay or Robbie, you can elaborate a little bit more, but that's something that we've got to, steps we got to take before we can cut a check to anybody.
That is true.
Not that we can't commit anything, but we just can't, you know, turn over money without going through those processes. So Commissioner Verran, what is your motion, sir?
I was making a motion to approve. 125,000.
The what?
I was making a motion to approve the 125,000.
Okay.
And we can commit the funds, we just can't appropriate from a code or anything yet until we publish that and brought back next month.
So the motion that came out of budget is a motion to commit?
Yes.
It's not a motion to approve? So I don't think that's out of order to do that unless.
I agree. Unless Jay disagrees with that.
I agree with it.
Okay.
We just can't disperse the funds until we have public notice. I say it as statute.
You did. Jay agrees, and audit also ruled the same.
And maybe if there's maybe an amendment or an addition to the motion, asking the law, yeah, go ahead, Commissioner.
Commissioner Verran, would you be willing, and I'll continue with my second, would you be willing to amend your motion that we approve the commitment of these funds to be voted on next month? And we, during that motion, we ask our finance director to draft the resolution and have it ready for us.
I agree with that.
And the, the posting in the paper?
Yes.
All right, that covers it all in one motion. I like that. Kobe likes that.
We've got a motion to amend.
Well, it's, he's changing his, yeah, it's, we're good. All right, Commissioner McCamey, you are recognized, sir.
Where are these funds coming from?
They were, the motion from the Budget Committee was the terrorism fund.
This will be the first monument in the coalescing with the Green McAdoo Center. We will position Anderson County. We will position Anderson County to be the primary first stop on the civil rights tour. So, it's a, it's a no-brainer that this is directly going to impact the economic development of tourism, not just for Oak Ridge, but for all of Anderson County. Now, we can have the tit-for-tat, do they stay in an Oak Ridge Hotel versus a Clinton, but at the end of the day, this is going to be a win for all of us as citizens. So, that was, that was the reason for the suggestion, the recommendation that come from tourism. But I will say, this, this motion that we have now is a clean motion. It does not specify where the funds come from. My desire would be, if this motion passes, to make a follow-up motion recommending it come from tourism. And if that passes, that'd be it up to us at that point.
I'm in favor of the motion, I just, I couldn't understand why it was going from tourism.
Well, the Tourism Council had had an opportunity to look at it and what the fund balance is with tourism. I mean, I, I just find it strange that we just pick out.
Yeah, I will say, Commissioner McCamey, as Mr. Wells was present, and there was no opposition to that. So, and just to go back for parliamentarian reasons, you made a motion to approve the Budget Committee recommendation, which was already assigning funds out of tourism. So, there would not need to, just pointed where there would not need to be an additional. Any other questions on the motion? Commissioner Vare, you're recognized, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I apologize for missing the Budget Committee meeting, because this answer was probably given there, and I tried to watch it, but tried to do my homework before we came in here tonight. I think I know the answer to this question, but just so I can clarify, if this motion passes tonight, then all the correct paperwork and documentation is going to be prepared, then that is going to come back to whom? To the full body or to the Budget Committee?
It would need to go to the Budget Committee for appropriation first.
So, at that point, will be the discussion on where the money is coming from specifically?
We can, and it can also, I mean, we can include, I think the motion can include the Tourism Department as the funding source without appropriating the code or anything.
And then that's why I'm asking, because I'm a firm believer in, since the Budget Committee knows the budget, the Budget Committee would probably be the best place to start as far as where the funds do come from. I just wanted to confirm that before we went any further, because at some point, to Commissioner McCamey's point, we're going to have to decide the funding sources that we're getting this from. So, I just wanted to be, to be clear.
Well, and again, just to remind everyone, the motion on the floor is that it will be coming out of the tourism fund, is that's, that's the commitment right now, because that was the motion at budget that was approved, and that's the motion that's been forwarded to this body.
Okay, so the vote tonight will be to take the funds from tourism?
The commitment would be from tourism.
Okay. I, I got confused there for a minute or two.
Yeah, that's, I understand.
Okay.
And I can give an update of the tourism fund balance. It's on this cash and fund balance report, all the funds are on there. But currently, their fund balance is 465,140, cash this month, 1,67,874. So, that's probably the highest it's ever been since, I know it is since I've been finance director. And we do, with the sale of the building, they do have 300,000 in a revenue code that's affecting this cash that's causing it to increase. That will roll into their fund balance at year-end.
And I will say, Commissioner Foster also approved the motion. Just saying. Commissioner White, sir, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I don't agree with this in any way. I don't, I don't see this project going to be a tourist destination. I think it's too much money, and I don't like it coming out of the tourism code. So, I voted no on it before, and I would be for this, if we started the donation at 50,000. But 125, that's just a lot of money for starters, and I'm against it.
Thank you, sir. All right, Commissioner Anderson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Robbie, the grant that Stephanie was working on with the US, or, I don't, maybe it was USDA, it was for the Conservation Board.
Yes.
That, a few months ago, we had said we would do the match out of that, that's not been taken.
That has.
Oh, it has been taken out, so that, those numbers are after that's, okay, that was, and that was for how much?
100,000 of tourism, of their fund balance.
100,000?
The grant was 200,000, I believe.
Okay.
I'd have to check. That was last month, I believe.
Okay, okay. So, and I'm, I'm fine with, with voting for this, but yeah, we have kind of voted, kind of sidestepped the Tourism Council a couple times with some big-ticket purchases, so just remember not to blame tourism for their fund balance dropping 100 or 125,000 at a time. Thanks.
All right, Commissioner McCamey, you're.
One more question. Does the City of Oak Ridge, was there, did they pledge 125, and we're matching that? Okay.
All right. Commissioner Varen?
For those that weren't present in the nonprofit committee, we did talk about taking the money out of tourism. Stephanie Wells was present, and she had no objections at that time to it, you know, just wanted you to be aware of that.
Thank you.
Before it went to budget.
Let's wrap up with Commissioner Smallridge.
I think the amount is reasonable, and I think somebody made a good rationale how we arrived at that amount. And I, I think it just makes sense to take it out of tourism, and I think it will be a tourism destination. So, I'm very comfortable with this motion.
All right. Anyone else before we go to the board and vote? Seeing none, let's go to the board and vote, please. 14 yes, one no, motion passes. Thank you. Commissioner Wells?
I get a point of clarification, and first of all, thank you all for supporting this initiative. These folks are working their butts off, and good things are on the horizon for us. But I guess my, my question is, why will this need to come back before Budget Committee? When Budget's already given their confidence, made their recommendation?
To appropriate it, we can't do an appropriation with a code to write the check out of until we advertise in the paper.
And then it has to pass Budget again, then full commission?
It just, the Budget Committee will designate a code then, and we also will present a resolution at that time, which is what the statute also says.
All right, thank you so much.
Okay.
I should have been more clear about that in Budget, and I apologize for that. This is the first one of these we have done since the forming of the nonprofit committee, and we actually had the phone call with Audit that morning, and Jay's opinion came that same day also, so it kind of, you know, I should have done a little better job in Budget explaining that. And I apologize.
All right, Robbie, you're.
All right, purchasing agenda. There was no contracts under A, under B, contracts pending law director approval, this has been approved since, the Tennessee Quality Investments, the trustee and county clerk, new lease agreement out in Andersonville, Norris, Andersonville.
Okay, we've got a motion by Commissioner Jaeger to approve as a group, sir, the two contracts?
This is only one right now.
I think he is lumping them all.
Okay, that's fine. We do have the, the grant that the mayor had approved earlier in her report with the with, for 194,000.
Is that okay with you, Commissioner Palmer? Okay. Any discussion? I do want to say congratulations to Regina and Jeff for getting a good space for a good deal.
A lot cheaper.
Yeah, saved a lot of money, and it was a job well done. All right, go to the board and vote, please. Motion passes.
Thank you. Under Section C, other business, there is a request to bid the falling on GovDills five EMS vehicles with starting bids, two at 500, one at 300, and two at 1,000.
We have a motion by Commissioner Jaeger as a, is this as a group, sir? Seconded by Commissioner Smallridge. Any discussion? Seeing none, go to the board and vote, please. Motion passes.
Okay, and the last thing I have for you is just for information only, we were able to sell three sheriff vehicles on GovDills, our starting bids were 250 and two at 500, and we, the winning bids were a total of 9,325 and 62 cents. So, that was a, a good job there. That's all I have on purchasing.
Good deal, thank you.
And finance.
Thank you, Robbie.
Thank you, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to you, sir. Dr. Parrott? Yeah. Report to the principal's office.
Thank you, Commissioner Mays. I will be brief, just a couple of things. One, I just wanted to make you aware and make the public aware, as of January 1st, when students come back, every student in Anderson County will eat breakfast and lunch free. So, that is. That's something we've been working on, and then we are working on a plan to go forward with that. So, 15 of our schools have got it for the next two years, but we're going to try to work with USDA to get another four-year extension on that, so work with that. And the other thing I would just ask you, I've been doing a lot of work on, I think we've got some of the best schools in Anderson County, and I don't want to see that money taken away from Anderson County schools, and I would ask you to support the resolution that is going to be in Mr. Jaeger's report in just a little while, and I'll take any questions.
Any questions for Dr. Parrott? Commissioner Allen, you're recognized.
Dr. Parrott, I want to thank you because I saw where you had this introduction to two-dimensional kinematics, and that's a great physics project. Did any of the eggs break? Was that a winner?
Well, I, I, part of them.
Part of them broke, yeah.
Yeah, and then they went back and worked on them again, so it, and I think that is a thing, is one of the things we have done in all of our schools is, is you may not, we have a, we have a STEM teacher, a technology teacher in all of our schools, and they're really working hard with the data and with the hydroponics. That's pretty neat that they're growing things. If you get a chance, go to Dutch Valley and look at their hydroponics.
Is that right?
Yes.
Well, I think that project was outstanding, and the physics, hands-on physics, it's always good to have. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right.
Merry Christmas.
Commissioner Wondell?
Thank you. Merry Christmas. Dr. Parrott, just, I, I know this isn't in your control, but I was just wondering if you had any updates, you know, went to the Anderson County Clinton game, and, you know, they're, they're still waiting on their bleachers. I know there had some issues, and I, I know we have issues with the Clinton bleachers. Is there any discussion?
We are, Jay had sent a letter to that company, took him a year and a half, but we, we have since rebid that out, and Anderson County's bleachers, we hope are supposed to be here the last week in February, the first week in March, and we're still waiting on the money to get back so we can rebid those others out.
Okay.
The, hey, on the ball field, just to let you know, all the turf is down, the fence is going up, building waiting on the inspection to get the concrete poured, and they should, they were supposed to have started the infield today, but they didn't show up. So, hopefully, we'll have the infield done by the end of the week.
You talking about the softball field at Clinton?
Softball field, yes.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Varen?
Dr. Parrott, speaking about this resolution, I did a brief little calculation in my mind, you know, with 33,000 or something like that, possible vouchers, it would come out to like 300 students per county. Do you have any rough figures of what that would cost the county to lose that number of students?
Well, you can, you can figure right at $10,000 a student, so that's roughly $3 million right off the bat.
I was thinking about two and a half, but, you know.
The, the problem is with that, they don't all come out of one school, so you don't, you can't just take, you can't take this teacher out of here, this teacher out of here, the fixed costs stay the same. So, it, it puts us in a bind, do we, do you raise taxes to make it feasible, or do you cut programs? I don't want to do either one.
Right. Well, one, one thing I was thinking about is that I think this would mostly impact around Oak Ridge and maybe around Halls.
Yes.
Those, Halls, Pile area, those two areas in particular, but who knows how many students we might lose? We could lose 300, we might lose 500.
I think too, the, the problem is, when you have a, when it's, you're just loose with the money, and that's about what we've seen, is you have these little schools that pop up, and they take people's money, and then they leave in the middle of the night, and now they're, they've used all the money, but Anderson County schools, if they come, if you have 150 students come back the next day, we're going to take them in, and we're going to educate them. And I think the other thing, just to let you know, Clinton City Council, Oak Ridge Council, our Anderson County Board of Education, Clinton Board of Education, and Oak Ridge Board of Education have all passed this. Thank you.
I will say real quick, not to cut off that conversation, but we do have that on the agenda for later, so if we could. No, I understand. We'll, we'll keep him down. Now, thank you, Dr. Parrott. Let's see, Law Director, Mr. Jaeger?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's truly an honor to be with each and every one of you tonight. Moving to my written report, you have it in your agenda packet. Any questions on your contract approvals, zoning violations, bankruptcies, delinquent taxes, lawsuit update? We were served with a lawsuit late this afternoon, a pro se inmate case on medical coverage of us, along with Southern Health Partners. I'll put that in your packet for next month, if you look at, doesn't look like there's little to no liability, from what I can tell. Blockhouse Valley landfill, any questions on any of these? All right, you've got a deed in your agenda packet. What happened here is, there's three parcels of land on the Clinton High School campus that were actually deeded to Anderson County Government, not the Board of Education. The school board attorney, Ms. Burrell, found this when she was doing some research. She has put together one deed, it's a quick claim deed, that takes all three tracks and gives those to the school system. They're small tracts that make up a part of the campus, and I'm asking for your approval tonight.
We have a motion by Commissioner McCamey for approval, seconded by Commissioner Anderson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Jay, I did add, sorry to interrupt.
No problem.
The, the letter for Pine Meadows, I know Operations did pass that, but I just thought maybe as a board that it might be appropriate.
I sent the review version out to county commissioners this afternoon. That's my next item, the Pine Meadows letter. You have a copy of that, some people call it Ben's Mobile Home Park, but it's Pine Meadows, and what that letter tries to do is just tell the residents, it'll go to all owners and residents of that facility, tell them what we're doing, what we're trying to do, and what our commitment is, and what the future looks like. We addressed several things in there, the roads, the history, crime, and the Sheriff's Department's done an awesome job down there, the Homeowners Association trying to resurrect that, but I put that out for review, and I've got one question, do you want it to go on my letterhead, or do you want it to go on the county letterhead? Just, and I'll put it on however you want it to go, and I will try to get it out in the next couple of days. Any ideas?
I'm good either way, Commissioner, whatever you.
Mayor, do you have any desire on that?
I was hoping you'd say my letterhead, your letter.
All right, it'll stay the same. Any questions on that, and we'll get it out as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, Kobe, if you could go. All right. HR Director, Kim Jeffers Whitaker. Wow, I was waiting on it.
That was number one on my list, but thank you, sir.
Good evening. I want to thank you all for all your hard.
I want to thank you all for all your hard work. I apologize for not getting here last month. I was a bit under the weather. I tried to come in November to bring to you all our local veterans' food drive, but I couldn't make it. But wanted to kind of report out real high level. Um, this year, uh, HR collaborates every year with, um, Leon, Jacquet, and the Veterans Office. And there was fifteen local veterans' families, that included sixty-nine individuals that were served this year. So a big thank you, uh, to the employees. Uh, also, this year, we had the First Lutheran Church of Oak Ridge Quilting Group donate quilts that was given to the families. And that was a good addition and something that we hadn't had. Um, but, um, the biggest thank you always goes to all the veterans and the active military and their families. Um, we also collaborate and partner with Dollywood, who graciously, um, donates a couple of tickets. Um, and this year, the way that the employees get registered to win those tickets is to donate food. So this year, the winner was the Sheriff's Office Deputy Colton Van Doc. Uh, we also do a Spirit Week for, uh, veterans. And, um, this year's winners were Tina Price with the Election Office and Elizabeth Yarber with, uh, the Clerk and Master's Office. They come ducked out in all kinds of spirit for veterans and support, and we appreciate all of that support and recognition of our veterans. The other thing that I wanted to talk about is, you know, the spirit of giving continues in December this year. What we're doing, we've done it, uh, a couple of years prior, is that, um, every year, we do a holiday decorating contest. And this is supported by the county's wellness program. And, um, the, each department, they decorate their office, they submit those, and then I come to commission, usually in November, and ask you all to volunteer to judge. So if any of you all are interested in that, I apologize, I'm a little late. I have had a couple of you already, um, volunteered to do so. But if any of you are interested in judging the holiday decorations or the ugly sweater contests that went along with the general sessions, um, dinner, then please let us know. I will warn you, though, they are very difficult to judge. Okay? Uh, last thing I wanted to share, and it's, it's pretty high level. It's, um, again, the wellness program, every year does a, this year, we're calling it the Healthy Me Challenge. It's a maintain, don't gain, or a Biggest Loser Challenge, depending on what you're, you're wanting to do. I just wanted to throw that out there, give you all the information. There's a lot of good prizes that go along with this. And for the wellness program, it is, um, open to all of our county employees. And so it's helping to, you know, support them and raise awareness in being healthy during kind of a difficult time of year to do so. So that's really all I have, if, unless anybody has questions for me directly on any of those items. Thank you.
Kim, my last question. First of all, as you well know, I'm the defending champion of the Christmas decoration, uh, party. Um, I, one of the rules this year is you submit photographs and video. Uh, that doesn't capture the true ambiance of Christmas. Uh, you know, at our place, we have Christmas music playing, a snow machine, uh, hot chocolate for the judges, and fresh cookies. Um, I would like for you to return to the in-person judging instead of the, the photographs and the videos.
We will consider that for next year. We sure will.
Do we need to make that as a motion?
I, I agree, Jay. Photos, just don't do it.
Thank you very much.
All right, that's all I have. Thank you all very much. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to you. Okay. Moving right along to operations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Anderson made a motion to approve Resolution Number twenty-three dash twelve dash one-one-four-four between Anderson County Schools, Clinton City Schools, Oak Ridge City Schools, Clinton City Council, Oak Ridge City Council, and Anderson County Board of Commissioners opposing the Education Freedom Scholarship Act, seconded by Commissioner Verran, motion passed forward to full commission for approval.
We have a motion for approval and a second by Commissioner Wondell. Uh, Commissioner Allen, you're recognized.
Thank you. As I understand this, uh, resolution for the Educational Freedom Scholarship Act, this is legislation that is a proposal? Has this actually been, uh, billed? Is there a bill in the state, uh, assembly for this legislation?
Not to my knowledge, sir, no.
Yeah, I, I called, uh, Representative Reagan, and he said there's no bill has been filed. And, um, he was saying also that any opposition, any opposition resolution for the Anderson County Commission to an unfiled bill seems excessively premature. So we're actually voting on a bill that really is not even on the floor of the, um, General Assembly. So, um, I would be opposed to, um, voting for a resolution for a bill that does not even exist.
Thank you, Commissioner.
You're welcome.
Allen. Commissioner Anderson, you're recognized.
I'd rather be excessively premature on this than a day late and a dollar short to oppose it. Um, I think the, uh, the spirit of the bill is just, we oppose vouchers in principle, period. Some of the people that I've debated this with that, that support them say, well, you could just close a school. Um, I don't think anybody wants to see Bristle Elementary closed over this. I know I don't. So, uh, that's why I think it's, uh, perfectly safe to go ahead and just oppose right now.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Anderson. Commissioner McCamey, you're recognized.
Commissioner Anderson said exactly what I was going to say.
Easy enough. Uh, Commissioner Wondell, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, uh, you know, for the life of me, whether the bill's on the floor or not, one, one thing we do know in politics, usually where there's smoke, there's fire. Um, I, I, too, like Commissioner Anderson, uh, I, I'd rather be preemptive. But what really bothers me is for our representative to say this body is premature, out of order, or whatever his email said. Uh, I don't appreciate it. Uh, there's many things that Representative Reagan's done that he didn't ask none of us for our opinion. And, uh, many times, we didn't have the ability to even respond to after the bill passed. So I appreciate his email, I appreciate him saying it's not on the floor, I appreciate him saying that we're out of order. But let me just assure you, this county has the best school system in the state, far as I'm concerned. And for anyone to think that you can take, um, ten thousand dollars per child away, and what you got to think about is Commissioner Verran and Dr. Parrott discussed briefly, um, three million dollars leaves you hypothetically. And then those children come back, we still have to educate them. The money's gone. Then it will be a tax increase. And I never vote for tax increases, but in that situation, I probably have to, because we've given, sold our souls away. So I'm totally against any, uh, messing with federal dollars from the federal government for our school system. I'm totally against taking any of the dollars that we currently get for our school system. I'm proud of our school system, and I, and I, and I have no problem letting anyone in this state know that I don't want any dollars taken away, whether it's on the floor or not. I, I'd like for our, our letter to be on the floor. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Allen, I'm gonna jump to Commissioner Wells first, since he's, you have not, you've already spoke on the issue. Uh, just kidding, Sabra. I thought, I heard a groan over there, and I didn't know what that was about. Now I know.
I don't think it's premature at all, considering the talks that have been going on in Nashville. I mean, I'm reading all about this. I don't think, I, it's there, they're talking about it. So I don't know why Representative Reagan would allude that this was premature. Um, being one of those parents, I have sent my kid to private school. I paid for that. Times weren't easy, but, you know, we made it work, and now he goes to public school. He goes to Oak Ridge High School. He's a senior there. Um, I think this would be a complete devastation. As being a parent that's done both, um, this county cannot take that chance of what they're doing in Nashville. Um, I, I'm with Commissioner Wondell. I don't appreciate Rep- Representative Reagan saying that when there has been lots of talk in Nashville. I'm reading about it every single day. I've read probably twenty articles in the last week about school vouchers. But I think this would be a complete devastation to all of our school system, not just Anderson County, but Clinton City and Oak Ridge. So I'm gonna be voting, um, against the school voucher program.
Thank you, Commissioner Roacham. Let's try this again. Commissioner Wells, you're on the floor.
Dr. Parrott, just a quick question with a brief answer. Majority of the children that are residents of Anderson County that go to private schools, do they go to private schools in Anderson County or in Knox County?
They go in Knox County.
So Republican, Democrat, none of that matters in this situation. You all appointed me with confidence to represent my neighborhood. I think all of us need to remember, this is about our neighborhoods. We're gonna send that money to Knox County if we let the state come through here and push the voucher program. And without using foul words as much as I want to, that ain't happening on my watch. There's too much, too much to lose in our community, in our neighborhoods. And, and I hate seeing, I hate seeing money go from Oak Ridge City to Clinton City. I'll be dang if I want to see it go to Knox County. So I think we need to stand unified on this, and, uh, Representative Reagan, a longtime friend and a neighbor, he will be hearing from me personally about it. But I think we, as a body, need to make it known to Nashville as it represents this county. We're not for that, so.
Commissioner Welsby, you were up, and I saw it disappear. Did you want to speak, sir?
Yes, I would, please, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I was sitting in that seat as state representative, and I hope to one day, that's my goal, I would really appreciate what this county commission is sending beforehand, because that's a way of listening to the constituents of Anderson County, is you listen to your county commission. I don't see it as a threat to, you know, whatever they want to do. It's just letting us know beforehand, when you make the decision, how we feel. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Uh, Commissioner Allen.
Yeah, I just want to find out what is in the bill before I vote for it. I don't know what's in it, we don't know what's in it. So, uh, that's my only point, is that, uh, what does the bill say? What's in the bill? I want to find out what's in the bill first.
I understand. So can we get the, who made the motion? Commissioner Anderson and a second by Commissioner Wondell, correct? Will you go ahead and make the motion again? And, okay, we're good. Had a little glitch there. Madam Mayor. Yes.
I just wanted to make a couple of remarks since, um, we're debating this. Um, you know, one of the things, if you look across the nation, I'm going to step out and say, this is happening across the nation. And, um, I would just challenge Anderson County to be in a posture of preparedness for change. Um, if you look at, um, innovation throughout history, whether it's the oil lamp, um, and electricity, or, um, you know, any type of innovation, um, we can't sit here and say Anderson County schools are the best in the, in the state of Tennessee and fear some level of competition or change. I mean, I don't believe that, um, there will be a mass exodus from Anderson County schools. I think educational savings accounts are really, and I, I've said this to Dr. Parrott before, there are areas of the state of Tennessee that are not teaching our children to read. And, um, I understand a protectiveness of our own county, but we have opportunities here. We have fantastic school board members, we have fantastic teachers. And when people in the state legislature and the governor is poised to give more and more funds for innovation, I say that Anderson County stands at the front and says, look, we're looking at other ideas. Um, we've talked about, um, the opportunity for Claxton School. Let's present a, an idea for how we make Claxton Elementary different so that we can attract more funds and stand out further. Um, one of the things I would like to see, um, for our own county, every year, uh, Dr. Parrott stands in front of this board and talks about, um, the numbers. Public schools are losing numbers without vouchers. So why is it? Is it we're not marketing it correctly? Are we not bragging enough? Um, are we not highlighting enough that we do well? Should we consider, there are a lot of people that, um, after COVID have, they got used to homeschooling their children, and they kept homeschooling their children. How do we draw them back into the classrooms? Can we ask for some type of waiver where we ask the governor in the legislature, hey, if we let students use a science lab, will you give us, uh, some tuition? We have a lot of tuition going on in Anderson County, where county students go to Oak Ridge schools. Um, we don't see that as competition, although I do. I look at those dollars going over to Oak Ridge, and, and from a county standpoint. But I, I'm just saying, I, I don't want us to be, if something changes, I would like to see this county poised to be the number one in, okay, how do we capitalize on it? How do we do it better and show how we do it better here in Anderson County? So I, I just, I want to add those comments to the larger conversation. Um, and, I mean, you have to look at some districts where, um, you know, you might have four students that are, um, you know, achieving grade level. So I'll end there.
Thank you, Mayor. Does anybody else have anything to add? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I just want to be clear on the vote. Four, it, four is, yes is for the.
Yes is for the resolution as written.
Okay.
Yeah, no, and, and the resolution is opposing the vouchers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it.
And no would be, you're obviously against the resolution. All right, see another discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
Motion carries. All right, moving on. Chairman Welsby.
Mr. Jaeger made a motion to approve Resolution Number two-three-dash-one-one-dash-one-one-three-two, supporting operations green light for veterans and lighting the courthouse green each year, seconded by Commissioner McCamey. Motion passed forward for commission for approval.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner McCamey, seconded by Commissioner Verran for approval. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Commissioner McCamey made a motion to approve Resolution Number twenty-three-dash-twelve-dash-one-one-three-eight, authorizing the county mayor to pursue and negotiate partnerships with all county government and other potential regional stakeholders for the purpose of establishing a regional collaborative approach to economic and workforce development. Seconded by Commissioner Allen, motion passed forward for commission for approval.
All right, we have a motion for approval, correct? Uh, Commissioner Allen, and a second by Commissioner Verran. Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to entertain an amendment. I handed out, um, a, an amended copy to all the commissioners. Uh, the city of Oak Ridge, uh, is also interested in being part of this resolution. So the updated just inserts their name, the, the city of Oak Ridge.
Commissioner Allen is okay with that as part of his motion. Commissioner Verran is okay with the second. Uh, Commissioner Wells, you're recognized, sir.
Be curious, I'm in support of this motion, but is this something that should be coordinated with Intergovernmental Committee on county commissions behalf?
Um, we can do that, yes. I mean, it, it's not committing the county to any funding or anything like that. But, uh, what it is doing is basically saying, let's agree to collaborate with all of the opportunities that are in front of us, um, you know, with nuclear and all that's going on, um, and just collaborate. So yes, I mean, that would be an appropriate place for, for this to start.
Very well. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And that was as amended, correct?
Yes, it was, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Jaeger made a motion to approve Resolution Number two-three-dash-one-two, dash one-one-four-two, to create a reporting structure for their tourism director. Motion seconded by Commissioner McCamey, motion passed forward for commission for approval. Well, that motion failed.
No, the IT passed. HR failed four to four, and IT passed five to three.
Let's see what we got on our report here. Oh, yeah, it's not marked up there. You're right.
And we're frozen here. Uh, we are on the IT resolution. One-one-four-one.
Okay. On my printout, it starts out, it's one-one-four-two. On my printout, it starts out, it's 1142, and it moves number five as 1141. On the agenda. Yeah, on the printout, it's just backwards.
Okay. We're on the IT resolution, is that okay?
Yeah, we can go to, Commissioner Allen made a motion to accept Resolution Number 23-12-1141 as presented. Commissioner Yeager seconded the motion, motion passed forward for commission for approval.
We have a motion by Commissioner Allen and seconded by Commissioner Yeager. I know that the law director, there was a, a place that he was wanting to strike in the resolution.
As I said before, in operations, I'll redo this and put it, take all the red out and put it in proper form. But there's one area that I missed, it's in Section 3, and it'd be totally inconsistent with what we're trying to do here. 1, 2, 3, about eighth line down, the director will follow the direction of the advisory board on all decisions approved by majority vote. We'll scratch that because the mayor will be in charge of that.
Okay.
You okay with that, Jay? We'll just take that line out.
Commissioner Allen, are you okay with him scratching that? And the, okay. And Commissioner Yeager? All right. All right, so we have a motion on the floor and second as amended by, referenced by the county law director. Any discussion on this motion? Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote no, not because I don't support it, it's just I, I, there's too many moving parts. Scratch this and add that, and I don't have a final document in front of me. So, you know, it'd be my wish that all of these would be kicked another 30 days so we can look at them all. There's just a lot of questions, we don't have answers. Everyone knows we need to do it, it's just the process in which we do it. And there's a lot of other questions as it relates to the boards, are they going to stay in place? Who's going to handle the budgets? Who's going to handle making the determination when someone needs to be terminated? You know, how's all those things going to play out? I just don't have all those answers. So I'm going to vote no at this time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. All right. Seeing no other discussion, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
Okay, we'll go back to Resolution Number 23-12-1142 to create a reporting structure for the tourism director. Motion seconded by Commissioner McCamey, motion passed forward for commission for approval.
All right, Commissioner, motion made by Commissioner Allen, seconded by Commissioner Yeager for approval. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
Commissioner Anderson made a motion to approve Resolution Number 23-12-1140, urging Congress to extend the deadline application for the livestock forage disaster program through the U.S. Department of Agriculture Farm Service Agency. Seconded by Commissioner Allen, motion passed forward for commission for approval.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner to appro, Commissioner Anderson, motion to approve, seconded by Commissioner Allen. Any discussion on this motion?
Tell me what that means. Tell me what this bill means.
Commissioner Wondell, it's an extension of the deadline to file for drought assistance. You're asking for 30 days.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Commissioner Wondell made a motion to approve Resolution Number 23-12-1143, requesting the Tennessee General Assembly to pass in a Bill 1298, has Bill 0681 to amend Tennessee Code annotated Title IV, Title VIII, and Title 68. Relatives to rescue squads, seconded by Commissioner McCamey, motion passed forward for commission for approval.
Thank you, sir. We have a motion by Commissioner Wondell, seconded by Commissioner Allen. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Commissioner Wondell made a motion to have the letter drafted to Ben's Mobile Home Park to all the residents and homeowners, approved by the mayor, then send it out. Seconded by Commissioner McCamey, motion passed unanimous.
All right, we're froze up here.
That was actually under old business.
We about made it. We about made it. It's good right now. I think it's the fluorescent lighting tonight. All right. No, that's, we need, that's the fire commission.
No, that's at Anderson County Rescue Squad, but it's not at a fire commission. It's at Operations.
Yes, it was under old business.
It's got us in the... I'll tell you what we'll do, let's just, I'm going to do this by voice for the letter for Ben's. Motion by Commissioner Wondell and seconded by Commissioner Yeager. Any discussion on the letter? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, we are at the fire commission report by Commissioner.
Hold on just a second, Mr. Chairman. There was one thing that Commissioner Wondell had asked to request for something to go on there and inadvertently got left off.
Okay.
And if you would please yield to Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Chairman Isbell, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, for letting me speak. On November 13th, at the Operations Committee, Mr. Chairman, I had a motion to, let me see here, made a motion to develop a board for the animal shelter with the mayor and the law director's help. Amended the motion that the board will be for the operations maintenance and funds for the shelter and come back to the Operations Committee. And I, I just wanted to kind of talk about that tonight and see if we've had any progress. It was my fault, I didn't put it on the operations agenda last month, Mayor, so I, I was traveling back and forgot about it. So I just want to figure out, Mr. Chairman, should I make a motion to put that back on? Or what's your recommendation?
Yeah, I think if we're going to discuss it, we need to make a motion to add it to the agenda.
How about I make a?
Well, it could, it could go under old business, actually, sir.
What's that?
Did it pass Operations?
Yes. How about I, what, 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 I'll make a motion to send it back to Operations and, and have the mayor and the law director report back there with what they're finding? Is that okay, Mayor and Jay?
That works.
Okay. I'll make a motion to, okay, I'll make a motion to forward to Operations, next Operations meeting, from the mayor and the law director, some board recommendation drafts for the animal shelter going forward.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Wondell, seconded by Commissioner Yeager. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
That concludes the Operations Committee report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. So now, Kobe, we're going to be at the fire commission. And while he's doing that, Chairman Wondell, you can go ahead with your report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Anderson County Fire Commission met on December 5th. We had very good discussion on many different items. We had discussion on getting a potential part-time person to help take over the secretary duties. We're going to be working on that. There was some discussion, and as was already discussed here and already been approved here, on the TACN system, which we just approved. The fire commission as a whole passed that unanimously. The next item that we had, Mr. Chairman, was a motion by Commissioner Beauchamp to temporarily suspend the voting rights of the Anderson County Rescue Squad from the Anderson County Fire Commission pending investigations, comptroller's office, DA's investigation, and having an active board for the rescue squad, sending correct paperwork to the, from the Secretary of State's office. That motion passed and was seconded. So basically, again, that is a motion that suspended the rights for the rescue squad until they get their paperwork in order and come back to the fire commission, and we have everything we need in hand to have them as a regular voting member. I'll make that motion to push it through there.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Wondell to suspend the voting rights. Anderson County Rescue Squad, Fire Commission, we have a second. Seconded by Commissioner Beauchamp. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Yeager, you're recognized.
I'd like to ask Jay if, if we're following the proper procedure for this.
Yeah, what I, I've spoken to Commissioner Beauchamp and Commissioner Wondell, I think we need to do a resolution here before we donate any more money to the rescue squad. They've got to comply with our nonprofit rules and regulations and the state statute. I think there's probably four or five little hurdles. They've got, they're well on their way. They've got a new board that they've put together with some great people on it. And I think before we even get to the point of thinking about additional appropriations through donations to the rescue squad, certain things have to be met. And I'd like to bring that back next month to the fire commission, let them look at it. I've asked for some input from members, what they think, but what's occurred is some of the money that they requested, you know, we asked for them to have specific items that they needed, we gave them a check, and they didn't use it for that. So I agree it was necessity, and they talked to the county finance department about it, but none of you knew about this. And they used it for, there's no doubt, it wasn't part of the funds that are missing that we can tell right now. That happened well before this, but I think this, we need to take care of some things to make sure the board is reconstituted, they're good with the Secretary of State, they file their annual report, they comply with our not-for-profit donation policy, and before we move forward. But that's my recommendation on that. And until then, there was talk about taking, stopping them from running calls. I'm totally against that. I mean, we don't need that in this county. There was talk about kicking them out of the fire commission. I don't like that. I don't think that's a good thing. But for now, until they can get, reconstitute and get everything squared away, suspending their voting rights is, is as good as we can get. And that, honestly, it's to get a little leverage, to get them to comply with the law, get things straightened out. I talked to Chief Allen, he's doing a great job. He's come by my office a couple of times, we've talked. I think he's trying his hardest to get it done. He's looking at retirement in a few months, and he wants to pass it off in good condition, and he's told me that. So I think we're well on our way to getting the rescue squad fixed.
Okay. Commissioner Isbell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'll respect the fire commission request and will support that. And I think Jay touched on some of the things that I was going to say is, because the folks in the rural community especially, you know, they really depend on the rescue squad and being there, and I just want to make sure that there's no interruption in service there, especially in.
No, sir, they're running calls, and I don't think the county should step in at all about that. We'd be picking up a great burden of liability by saying you can't run calls, and that's not what it's about. It's to get them better as a rescue squad. And we'll do that. But I want them to keep operating. I want them, I want us to always have a rescue squad. They, they do have an important function for this county, where we're in need and dependent upon the volunteer firefighters. We need them also, so.
Our first responders is just phenomenal.
I don't know what we'd do without them. I think about that all the time, but thank you, sir.
All righty, we've got a motion on the floor in a second. Is there any more discussion?
Just, if I could, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I just want to say this, this motion is only saying that we're suspending the voting rights. We have not made any decisions as a fire commission, as commissioners, to take funding away. We have not made any judgments on the operations and what is or what isn't happening. Our, our only ability, Commissioner Yeager, was to suspend the voting rights, and that's what we did. We had to take some sort of action, and we felt that was appropriate and hate, appreciative of Jay's to help. So I want to be very clear here that the fire commission has no desire, I'm speaking for myself, and I thank Commissioner Beauchamp, we have no desire to remove the Anderson County Rescue Squad from the fire commission. There are great people there at the rescue squad, as have many before them as well, but, so I, I want that to be very clear. I don't want people at home to think, oh, well, the fire squad, this or that. There has been some positive things, Mr. Chairman, has already been mentioned. They've elected a new board, and I'm very confident in the new board they've elected. Myself and Commissioner Beauchamp attended that board meeting, and I think we're both pretty pleased with what we saw there. So we didn't talk, we didn't make any motions, we just attended. So that, that's all, I want to give that a little bit of feedback, so everyone clear on where we are. This is only a motion to suspend the current voting rights for the rescue squad and fire commission.
Yes. Mayor, you said you wanted to?
Yeah, just, I just have a question for clarification, so that if other departments come out of compliance, what is the exact cause? If we could just specify so that we have a standard for anyone that's not in compliance? Is it not having a proper board constituted, which they did not? But what is the cause so that going forward, we know any other department that may come out of compliance is also suspended or receives equal treatment?
Mayor, I think you hit it on the head. We had, I've sent it all to you, their Secretary of State report was actually not what was going on there. They had board members that had been removed in 2020 still listed as board members, and one of the parts of our not-for-profit donation policy says that you've got to be organized with the Secretary of State, and they weren't properly organized. Now, they're active, they filed an annual report last year, and I've sent that to you, but until they're recognized as a proper entity, I don't think we honestly can give them donation funds anymore. That's not compliant with our policy, and that's really one of the first steps, is to get right with the Secretary of State, be a licensed organization, not-for-profit. They have been off and on, there was a couple of administrative dissolution agreements in there when we got their records back, but for the most part, they've been compliant. But the annual report they sent in last year was not accurate, there's no doubt about that, and we need an accurate report. And I believe that's the basis of where we're at. But that goes for everyone. That's not just the rescue squad. That's our policy. In fact, I sent Robbie the law on this, and they need to be properly organized for us to donate to them. You just can't come up to county commission and ask for money, not having a Secretary of State authority, not being licensed, and I think that's a good idea. But anyway, that's where we're at on that issue. Any questions?
No, I'd like to get to Commissioner Palmer.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I think you just answered it in that statement, but because they're out of compliance, we will no longer be appropriating money to them until they're in compliance. So that's happening.
Yes, it's, that's temporary, and we're not in this budget cycle yet, although Robbie would probably disagree, the budget cycle runs continuously here, but this is something that can be fixed rather quickly. And as soon, in fact, it can be fixed in 30 days, and I believe they're well on their way to getting that done. They had to reconstitute a board. They didn't have that. And as soon as they file a Secretary of State paperwork showing that proper board, we're probably back in business. We just need to make sure they're compliant with our not-for-profit policy by the time we do give them money in next year's budget, if that so happens.
Okay, so that's take, that's happening. So what we're voting on tonight is just a suspension of voting rights.
That's it.
Until they're in compliance.
Voting rights only. Voting rights only.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Smallridge.
I hate to admit my ignorance about this, but what is, what exactly does the rescue squad do? Somebody give me a brief explanation?
Well, there's better folks out there in the audience who could probably answer that, but I'll just say this, it started, I believe, 1958?
You're correct, sir.
Is when the Anderson County Rescue Squad started. And it was started, as Commissioner Isbell said, to, to provide the, the rescue services to the county, and they were pretty much the end-all with volunteer fire departments. But things have really grown, I guess you can say, in Anderson County. The volunteer fire departments are very well-trained now, so whether it's extrication or ropes, all the things they do, they can speak to it better than I can. they can speak to it better than I can. A lot of our volunteer fire departments provide their own services in that regard. However, the rescue squad's still needed now, I don't wanna fool nobody here, I don't want, it isn't our goal to see the rescue squad go away. So, you know, some of us might be sitting around the table thinking, well, just because they don't have a board, we suspend the rights? No, there's other things with it. When I read a document that was turned into this county, that's the nine-ninety form, and it says on the document that thirty-two thousand dollars was stolen, that makes me, as an elected official, then go to the next step, which is by law, as an elected official, it's my duty to notify the proper authorities, which I did with an email. So, the only next step we could do is meet as a commission, fire commission, and take action. So that action was to suspend the voting rights. Again, no money's going anywhere, we don't appropriate but once a year for the rescue squad, along with the volunteer fire departments, and that's twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars, and that's just to help support them through their training and the things they need to have done. And they turn a document in to the finance committee, finance budget office, and it says, here's the things that make us qualified. Okay, so when I asked for that document and I read it, and it said there was money stolen, or missing, or whatever the term was, I hate to try to do it off the top of my head, but it bothered me, so I wanted to fix that immediately, and so did Commissioner Beauchamp, so that's where we're at today. So again, this motion is just to suspend the voting rights. My hope is the rescue squad will continue to grow with the new board, and we get some, a new chief in there at some point. Chief Allen, to my knowledge, hasn't done anything wrong, I'm not a lawyer, I'm not here to trial him, I'm just here to try to solve the problem, let's move forward. Hopefully, that answers it.
Alright.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Motion on the floor and a second. Any last call? Moving on. Alright, all in favor of the motion presented, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Alright, is that, I'm sorry, Commissioner Wondell?
No, I apologize.
I didn't know if that was the end of your...
Next meeting for the fire commission will be January ninth at six-thirty PM. Annette, need to make sure the room's available for three-twelve that day, because I think that's gonna be a Tuesday, if I'm not mistaken.
There's, I think there might be another meeting, so it might be one eighteen...
We'll, we'll, yeah, I'm sorry, one eighteen, eight probably would be where we meet. The only other thing, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to talk quickly about is the E-911 gave a little update on the new technology benefit, that they're gonna be able to send a link-out to the caller for live active calls. I thought that was pretty interesting in that report that they shared with us. And then, they're also doing a tree of life for dispatchers and fire and first responders, kinda similar to what EMS does internally too, so I, we like that idea. So anyway, that's all I have, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, thank you, sir. Alright, any unfinished business? Seeing none, new business? You want me to, who do you want to handle this, the meeting dates and times? We have a resolution for our meeting dates and times for the county commission for twenty twenty-four. Should be in your pocket. We have a motion by Commissioner Vandergriff, seconded by Commissioner Wells, and Commissioner McCamey, you're recognized.
Yeah, on February twentieth, it's a Tuesday.
Yeah.
That's a Tuesday, and it's on the schedule for us to meet, but that's also the local county government day in Nashville.
Yeah.
And a lot of the commissioners will be at that meeting on the nineteenth and the twentieth. If I go, I don't wanna have to drive back from Nashville and then come up here and sit for three or four hours. So I'd like to get that one changed, maybe following Wednesday or Thursday, so that it doesn't affect those commissioners. We may not even have a majority if, if they elect to stay in Nashville on the twentieth without coming back here. So, that's one we may need to change.
It's a good point. Okay, so the current motion is to approve as submitted. Are there any amendments to the motion? Any suggested amendments to the motion?
They won't let me amend.
Well, you can verbally do it.
Well, I would make a motion that we have it the following Thursday, which would be the twenty-second.
The twenty-seventh?
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second. Alright, so the amendment, motion to amend to have the meeting on February the twenty-second, do I have a second? Alright, we have a second by Commissioner McCamey, I mean, Commissioner Wondell. We are gonna be voting on the motion to amend, is there any discussion on that specific motion? Seeing none, all in favor of the amendment, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Amendment carries. So the, now the motion on the floor is for February the twenty-second at our original times. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Alright, do we have any announcements?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, we've made some significant changes to three of our departments here tonight. When I came on this county commission, originally, we didn't have any of those three departments. We didn't have an HR department, didn't have a tourism department, didn't have an IT department. They were all created during mine, Commissioner White's term on county commission, and I think all three of them do an excellent job. They were created the way they were for a reason, and if anybody wants to know any of those reasons, I can tell you, but I'm not gonna get into that tonight. But they were, they were created the way they were for a reason. We've made significant changes, and I think our IT department is top-notch. I think our HR department is, is one of the greatest. And our tourism department has brought hundreds of thousands of dollars into this county because of their work. I think they do an excellent job, and I just wanted to point that out, because I had somebody tell me, said, well, y'all been doing it wrong all along. No, I didn't, I told them upfront, no, we didn't do it wrong, we done it right. And we've got three great departments, and I just wanna commend them for the job they've done, and hope that everything works out, you know, for the good. I supported the motions here tonight, I hope they all work out, you know, that way. If not, we can always go back and change it.
Well said. Commissioner Vandergriff?
Yes, we have, thanks to Commissioner Palmer, we have planned our next community meeting for the opioid settlement task force, and that will be in the Clinton area, it actually will be in the Clinton Community Center on January eighteenth at six-thirty in the Great Hall. And so, I've asked Annette if she would notice that, and then I've also had sent you all an email to let you know.
Commissioner Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to thank the sheriff's department for the extra patrols and enforcement in the Heinz Creek Collins Gap community, we had some residents had called and requested it, and then they emailed and said they noticed it and appreciated it.
Good deal.
So I wanted to pass that along.
Okay, the only thing I'd say is Merry Christmas to everybody, and hug your loved ones and your family tight, especially during the holiday season, it's an honor to serve with all of you. With that being said, is there a motion to adjourn? Alright. Motion carries, we're adjourned.